Okay.
That's what I'm, I can't, I can't do anything till that one hits.
I think so ahead of the game today.
Yeah, I'm looking very carefully at that one. I'm gonna call this April 7th Dorchester County Council meeting to order and I will ask if everyone will please rise and I'm gonna, it's my pleasure to ask Councilman Peter Smith if he will lead us in an invocation if you'll remain standing for the Pledge of Allegiance.
All right, bow your heads. Good God, we're calling your most holy and heavenly name. We like to thank you for all your minute blessings. Thank you for having us come together as one to do the county's work, continue to bless us and guide us in Jesus' name, we pray. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
First item on the, first item on the agenda is adoption of minutes for the March 17th County Council meeting. Do I hear a motion?
So moved.
There is a motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
We are unanimous. Next item on the agenda is the recognition of Dorchester County employees with 20 years or more of full-time consecutive service with the county. This is our county longevity program and I'm gonna let Mr. Ward kick us off.
Mr. Chairman and Council, we have a total of four employees to recognize. Two are present with us tonight. If you will indulge me, I will read the recognition for all four, but we'll ask employees, Etta Brooks from the Sheriff's Office and Jolie Tumbleston from the Sheriff's Office to come forward. The two employees that are, that are absent are Janice Hires, who is known to many of us as Teresa. She began her career with the Clerk of Court's office in January 2005 as the senior court clerk. Over the span of 20 years, Teresa has faithfully served under the Clerk of Court, advancing her career from clerk to her current role as Chief of Operations. Like he contributed to the success of the department over the years. Her dedication and service to the citizens of Dorchester County is greatly appreciated and we are recognizing her with 20 years of service to the county. Oh, yes, he is here. So we'll also have Mr. Freddie Willis come forward. He is now here to join the two of them. So now I will read these in order. Etta Brooks, with a career span of over 20 years in the Sheriff's Office. Ms. Etta began her career with the county on February 11th, 2005. Her role has advanced from an office assistant to administrative support specialist three, a role she has faithfully served in for the past nine years. Your service and dedication to the Sheriff's Office in Dorchester County is greatly appreciated. Congratulations, Ms. Brooks, 20 years of service with Dorchester County. Jolie Tumbleston. In March 2000, Jolie began her career with Dorchester County as a court security officer in the Sheriff's Office, rising in the ranks of the department. Jolie currently serves in the role of Captain, a rank she obtained in September of 2024. We thank her for her service and dedication to the citizens of Dorchester County and the Sheriff's Office. Congratulations on 25 years of service with Dorchester County, Jolie Tumbleston. Freddie Willis, beginning with the Road Department in February 2000, Freddie has been a dependable and hardworking employee throughout his 25 years of service. Freddie has served as a guard, equipment operator one, and for the past five years as an equipment operator two. With 25 years of service and dedication to Dorchester County's Road Department, a testament to your character and work ethic, we recognize Freddie Willis with 25 years of service. This time, County Council will join the employees for recognition and presentation of their certificates and awards.
There's a joke there, folks. It's all good, sir.
Nice hat, sir. Congratulations. I'm gonna turn the mic over to Sheriff Sam Richardson.
Thanks, Steve. Hey, I'd be remiss, everybody, if I didn't recognize. Had it don't go anywhere? Hey Freddie, come over here. I'm not gonna let you off the hook. Listen, just real quick, I can't say enough about these employees and how hard they work and the dedication they have for Dorchester County and the love they have for our citizens. And I'm just telling you, I can't overstate that and I appreciate you. I'm gonna tell you, this young lady is the first captain, line captain, in the history of our county. I want y'all to know that. She's, you know, she's a trendsetter and she's, you know, you're gonna hear more and more things from this young lady. And I appreciate what she stands for and your families there supporting you. Thank you for everything you've done for us. This young lady, I love her, I love, I love everybody here, but she never tells me no. I'll come up with something, dangerous things I ask her to do, she never says no. And she's always got a smile on her face. Anything she can do to help the citizens of Dorchester County, she's willing to do it. I can't overstate that. And Freddie, listen, why I asked him to stay here, he does the same thing. He doesn't work for me, but if I ask him to do something for the good of the citizens of Dorchester County, by golly, he's willing to do that. So I ask you to give him all a round of applause. Thank you for what he does and thank you for what you will do for the citizens. Thank you, everybody.
Mr. Chairman, we're recognizing employees with 20 years and 25 years. Want to recognize somebody who's on their first day down there, Mr. Peter Smith. Welcome. Thank you. Next item on the agenda is an adoption of proclamation number 2505 proclaiming April 20th, 25, fair housing month in Dorchester County. And I'm gonna ask Councilman Eddie Crosby if he will read that proclamation.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. This proclamation, number 25-05, proclaiming April 25th, 2025 as fair housing month in Dorchester County. Whereas Dorchester County desires that all its citizens be afforded the opportunity to attain a decent, safe, and sound housing and living environment. And whereas Dorchester County rejects discrimination on the basis of race, religion, color, sex, national origin, disability, and/or familial status in the sale, rental, financing, or dwellings, or provision of other housing services and related transactions. And according with Title 8 of the Civil Rights Act of 1968, known as the Fair Housing Act as amended. And whereas the state of South Carolina enacted the South Carolina Fair Housing Law in 1989, and whereas April is recognized nationally as fair housing month. Now, therefore, be it resolved, the Dorchester County Council does hereby proclaim April 2025 as fair housing month and Dorchester County adopted this 7th day of April 2025 by Chairman David Chenus and attested clerk to council, Lona Conrad.
So moved.
Second.
There is a motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
We are unanimous. And Ms. Kristen McGuess, if you will meet us up at the front, we're gonna present you with that proclamation. And Mr. Haiver, if you will, ready to come down there? We'll get everybody to go down there at one time.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. I appreciate it. Thank you. Thank you.
Gotcha. The next item on the agenda is adoption of proclamation number 25-06 proclaiming April 2025 Safe Digging Month in Dorchester County. And I'm gonna ask Councilman Jay Byers if he will read that proclamation.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Proclamation, April 25th, Safe Digging Month in Dorchester County. Whereas Dorchester County Council recognizes the month of April 2025 as safe, or as South Carolina Safe Digging Month across the Palmetto State, and an initiative supported by South Carolina 811, a utility notification information center celebrating its 53rd year of continuous service to the great state of South Carolina. And whereas South Carolina 811 is the Palmetto State's toll-free, one-call notification service to help the general public and public excavators obtain information on the location of underground cables, mains, and utility lines. And whereas, the volume of calls taken by South Carolina 811 Call Center totaled over 231,358 calls last year. And whereas, while economic development throughout Dorchester County and South Carolina is growing, it is important to minimize the damage to underground utility lines, reduce utility service interruptions while protecting the environment, minimize the danger to utility workers and the loss of utility services, and ensure the continuity of utility and communication services. And whereas, we are thankful for the service provided by South Carolina 811 and encourage all residents, engineers, professional landscapers, and designers, excavators, and homeowners to dial 811 at least three business days in advance of an excavation project such as planting a tree, installing a mailbox post or fence post, building a deck, installing footings or a swimming pool, or replacing a driveway. And now, therefore, be it resolved that Dorchester County Council hereby proclaims April 2025 as Safe Digging Month in Dorchester County. Be it further resolved that County Council encourages all citizens to recognize that South Carolina 811 saves lives, limits service disruptions, prevents underground facility damage, and protects the environment. Adopted this 7th day of April 2025 by David Chenus, Chairman, and attested by Lona Conrad, Clerk to Council.
So moved.
Second.
There is a motion and a second. Any discussion?
Yes, sir, Mr. Chairman. I noticed that we didn't have a clause in here about any councilman from West Virginia getting a set of post hole diggers and a stick of dynamite. Do anything, so.
I wasn't sure where you were going with that. Is there any other discussion?
No, sir.
All in favor?
Aye.
We are unanimous. Next item on the agenda is a public hearing concerning a funding application to be submitted to the South Carolina Department of Commerce, Division of Grants Administration, owner of our April 21st, 2025, for a community development block, block grant in the amount of $1 million to implement Phase 2 of a waterline replacement project in Stratton Capers neighborhood. And I will open the public hearing and invite Mr. Haiver to get this roll kicked off here.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Good evening, Council. Part of the community development block grant application is to also do a review of our community needs assessment. And as you'll recall, last month, we had the public hearing for our community needs assessment document. And we had that public hearing where we put the plan out for two weeks, two and a half weeks it was, out for public comment. At the public hearing, we received a number of comments as well as over the last two and a half weeks. And I thought it would just be good to wrap up and just let you, let you know what the comments were and how we were addressing those. At the public hearing, there were a number of issues that were brought up regarding the demographics and information that was shown on page two of the document. And what we were going to do, or what we have done, is we footnoted the population projection that was shown, dealing with the current population that was projected by the South Carolina Department of Revenue, which shows our population as of 2024 at 174,663. There was some question regarding the housing data in the chart. There was some reference made to lacking complete kitchen facilities in the chart, and that was a reference to substandard housing units. So that has been clarified and footnoted as well. There was also reference to broadband. And what we did is we added a paragraph talking about the completion of our broadband project in Aurora areas, the investment that was made totaling $17.1 million, of which 8.5 million was approved by County Council through the ARPA funding. And then Home Telecon and PRTC provided additional matching funds. The total project resulted in 325 miles of buried fiber to serve more than 4,100 homes with high-speed internet service. On page seven of the document, under the housing strategy, we added reference to men, women, and family shelters for transitional housing. Also on the housing page, we included a reference to Sustainability Institute, the Palmetto Primary, or the Palmetto Action Partnership, and Habitat for Humanity as 501(c)(3) that we will work with for housing repair projects. And on page 13, under Public Safety Needs, we included reference to neighborhood projects dealing with public safety that were identified by our Crime Watch outreach and our HOA meetings. So that document is currently being amended and we anticipate it will be completed by tomorrow and placed on the website by tomorrow. So moving into, and I don't know why that was moving like that, but this just shows the amount of funds that are available at, at the state level for participation in the Community Development Block Grant Program. Dorchester County is looking at, making an application for the spring round under the infrastructure program. And we are eligible to receive up for $1 million in funding. Our county map shows all our census tracts. And based on getting the highest recognition for our application, we're encouraged to submit for a project within the area having the highest concentration of low and moderate income population. That area is identified in red. That is a census, census tract off of Ashley Phosphate, and it is Census Tract 010818. And that is where our project is located. That's the Stratton Capers area. This just shows all the different areas of need that have been identified in our community needs assessment. The project we're gonna be considering this evening deals with infrastructure and it's a water improvement project. Examples of eligible projects, the first, or the second and third bullet on this slide fits within the project we're talking about, upgrading and deteriorating undersized water lines and adding fire hydrants. Our project area, the Stratton Capers Phase 2, is identified in the blue highlight. There are 47 properties within this, within this boundary. And our project that we're talking about this evening is a continuation of the waterline upgrade. You'll recall, last year we applied for funding for Phase 1. We did receive that. The project has been designed. We're waiting to receive final sign-off from the Army Corps. But as soon as we receive that, and we're hopeful within the next 10 days, we're gonna get that sign-off, we'll be able to go out for public bid. But Phase 2, we're looking to, there's 2,500 linear feet of new line that we're looking to put in. That's gonna be eight-inch line. And that'll replace the undersized li, water lines within that area. They're undersized by two, three, five, and six inch. And we're also gonna be adding four fire hydrants within this area. This is the budget. It's over $1 million. It's 1.1. And we can apply for up to $1 million. The county's match will be $162,650. That consists of engineering and grant administration. This was basically the result of an income survey that we had to do to make sure that the folks within that area met the income qualifications. Basically, 84% of the individuals residing within that boundary, they fall within the low and moderate income. So we definitely qualify for that. And the next steps, we have three weeks to complete the application pending your authorization this evening from the, following the public hearing. We're hopeful we'll be able to get that in before that deadline. And any questions?
Any questions?
No, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Haiver. And I don't believe we had any signatories to sign up to speak to that item. So I will
Thank you.
close the public hearing. Next item on the agenda is request to address council. I have two, and I'm gonna ask you to come up to the front, if you will, and state your name and address. And the first one, and I'm gonna apologize, I'm reading handwriting here, but I think it's Arlethia Cusack? it's Alethia Cusack?
Good evening.
Good evening.
My name, once again, is Alethia Lemon Cusack. And I have served for years, last eight years, as Chair of the Texas Community Park Board. I'm no longer the Chair. However, I'm addressing our requests that we made on February 21st, 2023. We were, as the park, if you look on the last page, there's a picture of the playground equipment in that park. That is all the equipment they have in that park. That equipment is not conducive to getting children interested even playing on the playground, because that's all they have. And I was asked to make a request for, to increase the playground equipment for the children. And during the summer, especially during the summer, we have at least 15 to 20 kids out there every day for the summer feeding program. And you see, this is not an enticing spot for them to come out to play. I'm hoping that the board will look at this and include some playground equipment for the children this year, not put on a back burner for another year. So that's why I'm here tonight to request that. If any questions that you have about that, please let me ask. You can ask them now. So please consider that. Consider the request. Yes.
The picture?
That's picture. That is the playground equip-
That's what's already there now.
That's currently there.
Thank you.
And that's why I wanted to make sure that all of you had a copy. And I went out there today and made some pictures so that we could see. And that's exactly what it is. That's all of it that's there. The park is, it was wonderful, but it's a good place for adults, but it's nothing for children. Okay? Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And the next and last is Mr. Richard Fields. Again, if you will come up and name and address.
Good evening. My name is Richard Fields. I reside at 379 Second Ben Road in the great city of Harlingen. Today, as I stated, my name is Richard Fields, and I'm here tonight on the, on the request of veteran Dorchester County. Question is, when would they would have access to the veteran building on Highway 15? You can send a response. I have an email and a post office box on the letter, and we would appreciate a response. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Next item on the agenda is correspondence.
Mr. Chairman. Mr. Chairman and Council, those items were sent as they were received.
All right. Since you got the mic turned on, the next item on the agenda is County Administrator Council, Mr. Ford.
Mr. Chairman and Council, the first item I have for your consideration is first reading and referral to the Planning, Development, and Building Committee for a public hearing and recommendation regarding rezoning requests. 9:30 for Lucius Hires to rezone one acre located at 507 East Fifth North Street near Somerville TMS number 138000013 from Transitional Residential District TRM to Office and Institutional District OI. Ask for first reading and referral to the Planning, Development, and Building Committee.
So move.
There is a motion and a second, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
We are unanimous.
Next item I have for your consideration is first reading and referral to the Planning, Development, and Building Committee for a public hearing and recommendation regarding an ordinance to amend the Dorchester County Zoning and Land Development Standards Ordinance number 0413 as amended with respect to Article 8, Section 8.2.7b1, maximum density, and Article 21, Section 21.13c, off-site streets, rights of way, and stormwater. Ask that you give first reading and refer this to the Planning, Development, and Building Committee.
So move.
Second.
There is a motion and a second, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
We are unanimous. Mr. Ward.
Next item I have for your consideration is first reading and referral to the Planning, Development, and Building Committee for a public hearing and recommendation regarding an ordinance to amend the Dorchester County Zoning and Land Development Standards Ordinance 0413 as amended with respect to Article 5, Section 5.7.2, Fees and Development Review Fee Account. Again, ask for first reading and referral to the Planning, Development, and Building Committee.
So move.
Second.
There is a motion and a second, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
We are unanimous.
Next item I have for your consideration is a request for approval to adjust the operating hours on Saturdays at the convenience centers to 7:00 a.m. to 3:00 p.m. Currently, those hours are 9:00 a.m. to 5:00 p.m. Based upon the study and the pictures that we also included in the packet, we have noticed that after about 3:00 in the afternoon, the amount of traffic significantly drops off. On the other hand, prior to the sites opening, cars are lined up. So we're asking that you make this change in the hours. It would actually coincide with the 7:00 a.m. start for the other days that the convenience sites are open. If you approve this, we'll make sure we provide notice to the public of the same.
So move.
Second.
There is a motion and a second, any discussion? And Mr. Ward just alluded to it, but what will be kind of the phase-in schedule for this?
We're actually going to try to do it as soon as possible. And on Saturday, you may have noticed some of the pictures with people lining up down the street in both directions along Central Avenue. And we have other occurrences happening as well for debris sites and Oak Brook, et cetera. So this is probably something we should have done before. Mr. Ola brought it to my attention and provided the evidence, and so we brought this recommendation to you.
Yeah, let's just get the word out to everybody so they're kind of tempering their expectations there. So, and some of us that go at the last minute, which is a really bad idea on a Saturday, will have to adjust, so just saying. Are there any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Next item for consideration is a request for temporary office space for Palmetto Community Action Partnership. This is space that's in the former Health Department located at 500 North Main. They do provide services to Berkeley, Charleston, and Dorchester Counties. Previously had a location here in St. George that closed after COVID. The majority of the clients served are closer to that Somerville Ridgeville area. They do understand that this will be temporary, but I ask for your approval to provide that space. As the diagram indicated, it would be immediately to the right as you enter the front door, behind the half door, and basically consisted of two offices. So I ask for your approval. I know that representatives are present in the back of the room if you have any additional questions.
So move.
Second.
There is a motion and a second, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
We are unanimous. Mr. Ward.
Next item I have for your consideration is a request for approval of dedication and maintenance agreement application for the gates at Orangeburg. Roads have been inspected, and we will ask that you begin the 12-month maintenance warranty period for the roads and drainage systems for the gates at Orangeburg to include Twin Peaks Drive, Stars Hollow Way, and Riverdale Drive as recommended.
So move.
Second.
There is a motion and a second, any discussion? All in favor? We are unanimous. Next item on the agenda is appointments to boards and commissions, and I'm going to kick this one off here with a couple, if I might. I would like to make a motion to recommend to the Governor to appoint Ms. Alexis Artists to the Dorchester Disabilities and Special Needs Board.
Second.
There is a motion of mine and a second, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
We are unanimous. The next item, or next appointment I would have is to reappoint Ms. Elizabeth Gore to the Alcohol and Drug Commission for Dorchester County. She is, remains active. She, her term has expired, but I'm trying to clean this up so the clerk doesn't yell at me any longer. So I'd like to appoint, reappoint Ms. Elizabeth Gore to the Alcohol and Drug Commission for Dorchester County. Second. And I feel obligated, since I think I first appointed her in 1995, I'm pretty sure. Well, she's been there, so that's, she continues to be there. So we'll do that. All in favor?
Aye.
We are unanimous. The next one I've got, and the last one, I'm going to leave it open for everyone else, is I would like to reappoint to the Parks and Recreation Commission Mr. Councilman Jay Byers, who's also expired in 2022, by the way.
I don't know, is he active?
Maybe.
Occasionally.
Second. So there's a motion and a second, any discussion? All in favor? We are unanimous.
I'm abstaining, Mr. Chairman.
Six in favor and one abstention. You ought to be able to vote for yourself. Yeah.
Well, okay, you know what, George? Okay. Anyway. I'm just going to put my hand.
All right.
No abstention, sir.
We are unanimous. Are there any other recommendations for appointments to boards and commissions? Yes, sir, Mr. Chairman. And tell you what, I don't want to step on anyone's toes on any of these, but let's see, to the Troughson Dorchester Mental Health Board of Directors, Ms. Melinda Terry, and that would be a reappointment. And, uh-oh, don't have a first name, Ms. Hazelwood. What was that first name? Uh-oh, I apologize. I'm trying to remember. I've seen this. Whoops. But, and this would be a new appointment.
Two seconds, I'm sorry. Georgia.
Thank you.
Yes, Georgia.
Okay. And, let's see, are we? You want to take these all together? Is everybody okay with taking these nominations together? Well, and I'll tell you what, we'll take them together since it is the same board. Yes, sir. So there is a motion to reappoint Ms. Melinda Terry and to appoint Ms. Georgia Hazelwood. And second, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
We are unanimous. And Mr. Chairman, the Foster Care Review Board, Ms. Nicole Bethune and our dear friend, Ms. Joyce Davis, I'd like to reappoint both of them.
Second.
There is a motion and a second, is there any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
We are, again, unanimous. Are there any other appointments?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, I would like to appoint Ms. Elizabeth Mitchum to Dorchester Seniors Incorporated.
Second.
There is a motion and a second, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
And I'd like to-
Hang on one second. I'm, oh.
Hey.
Got some- There's a caucus going on down there. Yeah, got a caucus going on down there. So it was, it was to appoint?
Elizabeth Mitchum to Dorchester Seniors.
No, a question I just had.
No, please.
Dominating somebody in my district. I was just trying to figure out what we're going on with that.
Oh, see.
Ms. Davis.
Okay.
Oh, see, I was, I said I was going to step on somebody's toes. I'm sorry, Mr. Smith. I apologize. Yes, sir. Sorry, sir. I honestly, for the record, if you want me to, we can withdraw the first and second, and you can make that motion if you would like to, sir.
Oh, yeah, I'm okay with Ms. Joyce Davis.
Yes, sir.
But you're in the process of calling everybody else, and y'all nominating people in my district without consulting with me. I mean, I'm talking to people.
Yeah, yeah, so.
Some people don't want to do it anymore.
Right. So, Mr. Smith, there are two people, one on the Board of Zoning Appeals and one on the Alcohol and Drug Commission that are in your district, because the, and that, previous to me coming on, your district ran all the way down and included part of my district. And so that's why they're there. So I'm waiting for you to decide if you want to reappoint or you want somebody else. And then based on what you decide, then I will go from there.
Yeah, that's not a problem. Like I say, I mean, the process of talking to everybody now, since I just got here.
Right, right.
So let's just hold off until-
Yeah, and I am.
Yeah, okay, thank you.
And, Mr. Smith, in deference to you, if we need to withdraw anything, I mean, what do we need to do for housekeeping? So just let us know, so.
I haven't talked to that individual yet, so.
Okay.
Yeah.
Thank you.
I have everything by the next meeting. I'll be the man for everybody.
You're ahead of the curve then, sir.
Yeah, I'm working on it.
Thank you, sir.
All right.
All right. So I think we've got that housekeeping. Are there any other appointments to boards and commission?
Yes. I would like to make a motion to reappoint Mr. Tony Pope to Dorchester County Economic Development Board.
Second.
There is a motion and a second, is there any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
I'm checking Mr. Smith's down there still looking here. You-
Oh, I'm sorry.
No, you're good. We are unanimous.
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Byers.
I have several appointments to also keep the clerk from being mad at me. So I would like to reappoint to the Dorchester County Library Board, Mr. Bill Collins. He has been serving for quite some time.
Second.
There is a motion and a second, any discussion? All in favor? We are unanimous.
I would like to also reappoint Mr. Walter Skip Elliott to Economic Development Board.
Second.
There is a motion and several seconds. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
We are unanimous.
And lastly, for this evening, for the Dorchester County Disabilities and Special Needs, I would like to recommend to the Governor the appointment of Mr. Hunter Jackson to serve in that role.
Second.
There is a motion and a second, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
We are unanimous. I guess a little bit of housekeeping here, and in almost every instance, Dorchester County has seven members on boards. And each typically, even though they're not necessarily specific to council districts, we all try to reserve that opportunity to appoint one of them to the board that may or may not live in that district, but ultimately, there are certain ones, Planning Commission requires to live in the district for certain, but the other ones do not. Just people that we know will represent the communities in certain instances are a limited number. Foster Care Review Board is one, that there are only five members, not seven. So that is a little bit more limited from that standpoint. But several of them, a couple of them do not have seven members, some of them do, but in any case.
Ms., Mr. Chairman, I would like to ask the clerk if our vacancies on the Foster Care Review Board are now filled, or we have any openings?
We still have two vacant positions.
So can I nominate Cheryl Graham to serve on that? I would like to, I would like to make a motion to appoint Cheryl Graham to the Foster Care Review Board.
Second.
There is a motion and a second, any discussion? That leaves one remaining position on Foster Care Review Boards, okay? Want to make sure of that. Any discussion? All in favor? We are unanimous. Okay.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir.
I have three this evening, two reappointments. The first is to reappoint Ms. Suzie Davis to the Alcohol and Drug Commission.
There is a motion and a second, any discussion? All in favor? We are unanimous.
The second is a motion to reappoint Ms. Sandy Emery to the Dorchester Disabilities and Special Needs Board.
Second.
There is a motion and a second, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
And finally, is a motion to appoint Mr. David McKim to the Board of Construction Appeals.
There is a motion-
Second.
And a second, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
We are unanimous. Thank you, Mr. Crosby.
Yes, sir. Thank you.
Any other?
Mr. Chairman, we're all in fear of our clerk. She is hounding us to fill our boards.
Thank you very much. I was, I was actually going to congratulate the clerk, the council. I think we, after several years, may be catching up with all the boards and commissions and getting the reappointments correct and in order, and no long-term holdovers from that standpoint. So I want to give Ms. Conrad a little bit of a hand there. So thank you very- very much.
Thank you.
Next item on the agenda is County Attorney's time. Mr. Frampton.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. First item I have for your consideration is first reading to an ordinance, authorizing and approving a first amendment to the Oak Ridge Landfill LLC Development Agreement, which was originally entered into in 2011. They are requesting a 10-year extension from the effective date of the amendment, which, if all goes according to plan, would be the May 19, 2025 council meeting. There will be two public hearings, the first to be advertised for April 21. The second public hearing to be advertised for May the 19, at which time it would be considered for third reading. So I'd request first reading of that ordinance.
Second.
There is a motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
We are unanimous.
Next, Mr. Chairman, on behalf of the Water and Sewer Department, the County Attorney's Office is requesting authorization to the, for the use of eminent domain to condemn a portion of TMS number 2, I'm sorry, 2870000312 near Poplar Grove, Hollywood, South Carolina.
Some move.
There is a motion-
Second.
And a second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
We are unanimous.
And lastly, again, should settlement negotiations fail, the Public Works Department is requesting the approval of the use of eminent domain for the condemnation of a portion of TMS number 145-12-01-024, which is for a portion of Suburban Lane near Somerville.
Some move.
Second.
There is a motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor? We are unanimous. Are there any other motions?
Mr. Chairman, I'm going to motion. We adjourn.
There is a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
We are adjourned. Thank you, Mr. Byers.